Other businesses to address issues, you know, ranging from stormwater management to flooding and erosion. Um, but work with farmers remains a critical part of what we do. So we provide technical assistance to farmers out in the fields. Um, on how to implement conservation practices that will work with their unique farms conditions. And to supplement that, we administer the state program that provides financial assistance for farmers to use those practices. Cause a lot of times they cost more than conventional. So here's where we get dollars and cents. In King George, um, one out of five acres is farmland. That's a lot of farmland. I don't have to do that. Um, but to give you some perspective on what we've been able to do, by the end of this fiscal year come June, uh, we expect to have delivered over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in income to King George County farmers in the form of conservation financial assistance payments. So for every one dollar that King George has invested this year in Tri-County City, you know, we have been fortunate to be able to return four dollars and fifty cents, um, to the county. And it's not all we do for the county, but that certainly is sort of our hallmark program. Um, and the easiest to translate into those dollars and cents. Um, but, uh, some other things that we're involved with and Dr. Young knows this, um, particularly well, but our staff's been coordinating administering the special project to identify and track water pollutants at Fairview Beach. Um, all the county funds are being used for testing, but, uh, we've been using staff time for administering it ourselves. And we provide a range of free environmental education programs. We've already served fifteen hundred youth in King George. This year, we've only got, what, two and a half months left, I guess. Um, we work with county staff serving as a resource on Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act issues. The whip three that we're all, um, anxious to see what comes of that. Um, we're gonna be, I, you know, we plan to be there for you guys when it comes to figuring out how to overhit the road with implementing the things that the state's gonna expect from the counties. Um, and that's just a brief overview of what we do. Uh, trying to cram it into three minutes. I apologize. It's, uh, it fits a lot. And I, I do not, I do not envy the difficult budget decisions you guys are tackling right now, but I really do thank you for your work doing that. Um, we are, Tri-County City is proud to serve King George County and we're proud of seventy-five years working together with you and, um, just thank you for the chance to speak and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Well, thank you. Do we have any questions for our callers? So I really want to appreciate you, uh, coming out to meeting and, and talking. Um, I really appreciate you dialing in and, um, please, uh, stay for the rest of the meeting.
I, I, I plan to. I see, working through this process is something we're about to start, um, really digging into on Friday. So I'm thinking I can take some lessons here.
Yep. Well, thank you for, uh, joining us. Dr. Young, is there anybody else online?
No, Madam Chair.
All right. Well, thank you. I'll close part with comment and bring it back to you, Dr. Young.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, well, I think that we, it's best that we first take a look at revenue and the reference point will be the spreadsheet, uh, titled revenue, um, that either sitting before you at the table in the boardroom or has been emailed to you, uh, in advance of the meeting. Um, it's important for us to understand that revenue for our budget comes from a variety of sources to include local taxes, uh, and revenue, state funding, federal funding and grants. However, there's still uncertainties surrounding the state budget. As you all are aware, the governor was supposed to sign the budget on April eleventh by midnight, uh, to get the state budget approved. However, he returned the budget to the General Assembly with amendments for their consideration. And now the General Assembly must approve or disapprove those amendments by April twenty-second. So in light of that, um, I know that we originally had a pretty, um, expedited timeline to get our budget adopted. But now that, um, there's been a wrinkle in the state budget, I think that I highly advise that we slow down the timeline, wait to see what's going to come out of the state budget and approval from the General Assembly and then move forward with our budget adoption. So with that understanding, I think that tonight's focus should be more geared around, uh, local revenue. And I think local funding is important because I would like to stress how the current state of affairs is going to impact our county specifically. If you look at the, uh, revenue spreadsheets, there are few specific line items that we believe will be especially harmed as a result of the current state of affairs. Number one, real estate, with the majority of our homeowners having the taxes tied to their mortgages, we believe that real estate revenue is sound. However, we do believe that it is going to be stagnant. And so for our budget this year, we actually captured that a one percent growth, just to account for that stagnant, uh, growth in the community. For personal property, we're predicting that the county is going to lose approximately six percent in personal property taxes. Um, and this estimate, of course, is a round figure, is our best educated guess that we are going to have some citizens that, um, even though the majority of our population is tied to the federal government, there are those that aren't. And we had to account for them having layoffs and, um, uh, furloughs. And they may be in a position where they have to choose on taking care of household essentials and utilities versus paying personal property taxes. So we felt that ten percent was probably a high estimation and five percent was probably a little bit too low. So we, um, we forecasted and anticipated six percent loss to that line item for the county budget. Um, in addition, as you all are fully aware, due to the stay-at-home orders, uh, from the governor and the recommendation of the county government, um, some of our businesses are closed or they are not seeing the normal traffic that they, uh, usually see, uh, by this time in the year or even going into twenty twenty-one. Therefore, we're accounting for that revenue loss, uh, as a twelve percent loss of sales tax and twenty-five percent decrease in meals tax. Um, and as you see how those numbers, if you refer to your spreadsheet, you can see how those numbers, I mean, how those, uh, estimations are impacted, uh, or quantified in the last column of the, um, uh, spreadsheet, three hundred and fifty, three hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollar loss in personal property, for example, or two hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollar loss in our local sales tax. Um, these are major impacts to our budget. However, if you continue to review the spreadsheet on subsequent pages, you'll see that the recession has negative effect, negative effects on multiple line items to include permitting, fines and fees. And I'll take it, uh, I'll take a moment to let you all take a look at the spreadsheet.
Everybody have any questions?
Hi, this is Frank Franz. Oh, I just had a quick question. With the real estate, delinquent real estate taxes with this whole COVID thing, do you not think that there may be some of those?
I think that it'd be, the impact to delinquent real estate taxes will be minimal because, uh, as I stated, um, the majority of our citizens here in King George County's real estate taxes are actually tied to their mortgage payments. And so since it's wrapped up in that PMI, uh, they pay their mortgage, the tax is already collected and placed in an escrow and the county receives those funds from the escrow. So we think that the impact simply because of that, uh, process is gonna be, um, definitely not as, um, impactful as, uh, personal property tax where there is no tie to it and people actually have to walk into the building and pay, um, pay that fee.
Aren't they going to give the people, uh, the ability to delay their payments on their mortgages?
We haven't had a, had a conversation with the board on that. Uh, oh, I'm sorry. You're talking about nationwide. Uh, yes, that, that, that's correct. Um, and that is a good point. Um, but we don't, I don't, I don't think that the impact is going to be that significant after having conversations with our, our constitutional officers regarding the real estate. We feel that the real meaningful impacts for, um, the county specifically for our demographics is going to be in the sales tax, meals tax and personal property tax. Thank you, sir.
Does anybody else have a question?
Ms. Bender. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, a question, Dr. Young, regarding the transient occupancy tax. You're looking at a projected shortfall of twenty, approximately twenty-five thousand dollars estimated.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Is that just kind of based on how it, let me just be direct and ask, had, had you reached out to any of the hotel operators to see what they're looking at? Um, I ask because I talked to one of the owner operators. It's the one who operates the Holiday Inn Express and Suites.
Yes, Madam.
Is also going to be the owner operator for the new one that obviously is, physically they're still on schedule. Um, but I'm just curious if you have any feedback from any of the other hotel operators.
Um, not a lot of feedback from the hotel owner operators. Um, the majority of my, um, consultation and, uh, predictions was based off of discussions with our regional localities. They all are estimating twenty-five percent decreases. And, um, in addition, with conversations with VACO, um, they've also had, uh, planning tools for us to take a look at for consideration going into fiscal year twenty twenty-one. I think that if this, uh, stay-at-home orders doesn't last very long through fiscal year, the impact, um, to the hotel industry in King George County will be more, uh, negative and meaningful in fiscal year nineteen twenty as we close out this, uh, year. But then going into twenty twenty-one, as those orders are lifted, then the revenue is going to increase, but we're still going to see some loss because, you know, it's gonna take time to build that business, uh, traffic flow back up.
Okay. And then the other point I would make in talking to him is a lot of his projections for the new hotel for sure, and maybe even the current one, are based on filling rooms with construction workers for the bridge. So we need to be very mindful and watchful of what is going on in Maryland because that's their bridge, they're financing it. And hopefully, hopefully they are able to stay on track and that will help out the hotel operators as well.
Roger, ma'am. And that's a good point. Who is the awarded contracting company for the bridge. Um, and we have a teleconference set up. Uh, it was supposed to be Friday, but we're actually gonna have to have it on Monday or Tuesday. And they're gonna lay out the timelines for the bridge and it's gonna be a coordinating effort that they're trying to, uh, meet with both, Charles, I mean, sorry, with, um, Maryland and with, uh, King George to make sure we all have a shared understanding for the future and the path to the bridge.
Very good. I'd appreciate it after that meeting, if you wouldn't mind emailing us on the board, just to, to let us know how that pans out. That's very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To follow up on Ms. Cupka's comments, um, also related to the transient occupancy tax. With the base, with the way things are going on the base right now, a lot of the hotel occupancy is based off of training and people coming, uh, for activities taking place on the base, schools, training activities, um, whether it's contractor related or specific to DOD. Um, so that's something else to follow up on. Uh, that also plays into it as well. We need to look at how are things gonna be going with the base? When are they gonna start conducting their classes again? And that, that will be that natural feed to those, those hotels. Um, not a lot of people are coming to King George just to hang out in King George, visit family and stay in a hotel. They tend to stay with their families. Um, but those, a lot of the hotel occupancy is directly related to operations on the base. So that's something to see what, when the base ramps back up, those training activities and classes, et cetera. That's when we, we might be able to get a better handle on what's going on with that transit occupancy tax.
Yes, sir.
Say, can Mr. Stonehill, do you have any questions?
Yeah. Not, not only the questions, um, I just, uh, yesterday, um, went down to Walmart and took a drive through, through the.
This area of Dogren and, um, the hotels, Holiday, Hampton, um, their parking lots were full. That was yesterday, which I was surprised, happily surprised. Um, also spoke to a friend of mine that does car sales and even though they're having to do a lot of, um, this is going back to the personal property. Um, even though they're having to do a lot of virtual and, you know, um, you know, meeting people in the parking lot, they said actually their numbers are still holding fairly decent, uh, especially with everybody, uh, kind of, you know, offering very low or zero percent financing for a while. So, um, you know, it may not be all doom and gloom. I, obviously the sales tax and meals tax is definitely gonna take a hit. But it's, um, you know, we keep our fingers crossed, maybe some of those others won't be quite as bad. That's all.
Mr. Stonehill, uh, going on for that, I spoke to a Realtor today and I, I was surprised to hear that they're still selling houses quite well, uh, with some precautions in place, but the real estate market is still going on and going somewhat strong.
Yeah, I, I heard, I heard the same from one of my customers who's a Realtor and he said he's, I mean, shocked but happy that, you know, things are still moving. Um, and he does a lot of, you know, work up in Fredrick'sburg, Spotsy, but he said up, up there it's still booming.
Mr. Granger, did you have any questions? How about any of our citizen advisors online?
It's, uh, this is Dr. Young. I, I, I do appreciate your, um, attempting to factor our realism into the lost revenue. Is it truly on the line, I, or lost revenue or personal property tax? Um, you mentioned there was a lot of payment. Um, would that be, then, the revenue that we realized in the following fiscal year? Or would we see a decrease in, uh, delinquent personal property tax line this year?
Ma- Madam Chair, I couldn't hear him. Could you hear him? I don't know if you could hear him better on the go-to-meeting platform.
Yeah, I think there's a little feedback there. He was, he was asking about the personal, the property taxes and if those are realized or do we have a feeling? I think I remember, uh, feeling that, that these, that it could be different than what you forecast. Did I get that right, Mark?
You, you muted, you muted, Mr. Mark.
Yeah, I apologize. I'm, I'm, I'm called in through my cell phone, which I, doesn't seem to be working as good. Yeah, I was, uh, the question was, is the, uh, lost revenue on personal property tax, is that a decrease in revenue or is it just gonna be deferred revenue, um, for, for payments in the, in the next fiscal year?
That I don't know. I'm, I'm, I'm counting it as lost revenue, as overabundance of caution. Of course, you know, um, you know, you can have, um, unpaid taxes that linger into the next fiscal year or you even have some people that are two or three years into arrears. So if that is the case, that we do, uh, realize that loss in fiscal year twenty twenty-one, um, I think it's best to just count it as a loss and, uh, I'd, I'd rather that we account for it now and be surprised when, um, it is, when it is caught up or paid and captured in the county coffers.
Um, I see Mr. Gabro is online. Did you have a question? I'm taking that would be.
The microphone muted. Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Questions?
I was, I don't have a question. I was just agreeing with Mr., what Mr. Young was saying that that makes a lot of sense, better to account for it lost and, and think it's deferred and then it does, does go, you know, more than one year delaying. But I'm glad to know you guys can hear me.
Um, great.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Gabro. And, um, I lost my train of thought. Um, that, that's good news, uh, Mr. Stonehill, um, and Ms. Bender, um, regarding, um, signs of good, uh, uh, economic sustainment for our local businesses. To be honest with you, you know, with this bleak picture and the bad news that I do have to deliver it to you all, I, 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 I hope I'm wrong. I pray that I'm wrong and, um, definitely have my fingers crossed and cheering for the county, uh, just as much as anyone, if not more. Um, so yes, this is of course, you know, the worst case scenario that's being presented and, um, being, uh, asked for the board to consider and to adopt, worst case scenario. And again, if signs start to indicate that, um, it's not as bad as were initially forecasted, then, you know, mid-year, we can always amend the budget to reflect, you know, a, a, a change in the trajectory for the county's, um, um, finances. So I'm, I'm hoping that we do end up having to come back and say, hey, uh, board, we need to amend this budget.
Commentary around that, this is Carrie Cleveland.
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, hey, good evening, guys. I just, I, I thought I would pipe in a little bit on the economic environment just to give you some background on, um, the real estate environment, also my line of business, which is, um, mortgage and banking and finance. So although the real estate environment is doing very well right now, something that we need to keep in mind is that people are not gonna be affected until this month. The latefall mortgages are not going to show until after this month, which means that the lag in time where the foreclosures are gonna come and the real estate environment is gonna go down will not be probably for two or three more months. If there is a big economic downfall for the COVID nineteen.
Well, thank you. I, I appreciate that feedback. Sorry, I didn't see you online because you're probably coming in as a caller, so it doesn't have your name on there.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm just calling in. So I'm not on the, um, the web app yet. So I, I, I've been trying to pipe in and let you guys know that I was here, but I've been listening on.
Well, I appreciate you being here and giving your insight. Um, Dr. Young, you ready to, uh, move on to the next slide?
Yes, Madam Chair. So our, our discussion regarding revenue, uh, in light of the unpredictability for the state budget ends at page six. If you look at page six in the row that's, um, uh, filled with baby blue, you'll see that that identifies, um, our budget for the general fund, basically the general fund being all the local revenue, um, for King George County and not, uh, worrying about state or federal funding. Um, you'll see that in fiscal year twenty-one and as highlighted on the, uh, slides, that, um, our budget calls for an estimate of forty-four million, nine hundred forty-two thousand, seven four, seven hundred forty-one dollars in revenue, and I'm sorry, in local revenue for fiscal year twenty-one. Next slide. But if you look at reference point, the expenditure spreadsheet that's on the table, um, in front of you or it's been emailed to you in advance of the meeting, if you look on page six of the expenditure, uh, spreadsheets, you'll also see the expenditures against the general fund. I'm sorry, this looks like it's misstapled here. Give me one second. I'm sorry. Okay, look, this thing was misstapled. Can you see page two? On page two, the bottom line in blue font labeled total general fund. Okay, that's highlighted on the screen before you. All is well for your reference point. You'll see that the revenue for King George County, uh, I'm sorry, the expenditures against the general fund for fiscal year twenty-one is forty-seven million, one hundred and three thousand, one, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars. So what that means is we have identified a budget gap between our revenues and expenditures of two million, one hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and ninety-six dollars. Next slide. And that, you all, that gap is what actually drives the, um, subsequent slides, which describes our budget proposal for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Next slide. The fiscal year twenty twenty-one current proposal calls for the budget to increase three point seven percent from eighty-five point three million dollars to eighty-eight point five million dollars. Under the current proposal, fifty-seven percent of the budget would be dedicated to schools with the remaining forty-three percent being allocated to meet county needs. If you note that our non-school, our non-school expenditures are increasing two point two percent. If we move forward with this proposal, our proposed, the board authorizes to tap the rate stability, rate stabilization fund to close the two million, one hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and ninety-six dollar gap. Please note that pursuing this option will bring our balance in the revenue stabilization fund down to two hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. Um, I know that that's, um, pretty, um, eye-opening, but, uh, I think that pursuing, um, option one for the revenue, revenue stabilization fund is, uh, our best option given the current conditions because this is exactly what the fund was, uh, established for. Um, people don't, people in the financial community don't like to say a rainy day fund, but the reality is the revenue stabilization fund is that rainy day fund. Um, I think that, um, with the purpose of that fund, we should utilize these monies to gap us from fiscal year twenty twenty-one into twenty-one, twenty-two. And then we can, uh, move forward with, uh, paying the money back into that fund in accordance with our financial policy. Of course, the financial policy requires that the funds be, uh, put back in one year, but given the, um, current, uh, state of affairs, uh, I anticipate that it's probably going to be a two-year, uh, uh, timeframe in order to get those monies back if we're able to return to our current, uh, state of economic growth that we were realizing prior to the COVID nineteen pandemic.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Young, th- thank you for this slide. Um, so I have a couple of concerns. One, our balance in the rate stabilization fund is two point four million dollars. So I agree with option one. We are not in a position where we can raise taxes on King George County this year. We've got people losing their jobs, losing their businesses, all kinds of other effects. So for me, that's out of the question. But with that said, two point one million dollars, um, basically brings this thing down to three hundred thousand dollars. And as you pointed out, our policy says we need to repay that back. Um, I don't like the idea of depleting this fund. I'd like to get it back up to par as soon as possible. I've looked at all the cuts that were made, especially since our last budget work session. I took a lot of things home and did a lot of homework. And while it's painful, I believe it's necessary, um, given what we are facing. However, I do have some heartburn. Um, my heartburn, and I realize this is gonna probably, um, raise a discussion and, and that's fine. I think, I think that's a discussion that needs to be had. But I think the discussion is we've made significant cuts to departments. We've even cut our sheriff's department. I think it's time that we need to ask the schools to tighten their belt. Um, looking at, at funding, I have a couple of things that came up. One, one thing is I have not seen a line-by-line budget from King George County schools. Now, I understand, okay? The school board is the one that gets a pot of money and allocates it as they see fit. However, I want, I would like to know where they're building this budget out of and how they're coming to this number. For instance, King George County, the county side of it, we have eliminated capital purchases. We have eliminated travel and we have eliminated raises. My question is, has the school board done the same thing? What I was looking at was they were coming in at nine hundred and so thousand dollars, additional monies to their budget last year. This board said for a placeholder pending further discussions, we would look at level funding the schools. With the raise that the schools were proposing, their raises would be across the board. It's not centric to teachers or, or targeted areas. It's across the board. That figure alone, just the raises, came to nine hundred and something thousand dollars. So with that, if, if we're eliminating raises on the county side and we gave the schools rate or funds to provide raises for the schools last year, given the environment we're in and what we're facing, I agree that the raises should, or the funding amount for those raises should go. But then it brings me to, what are we looking at for their travel and for their capital purchases? I think that's ways that could be cut. Every cent that we're hitting this revenue stabilization fund is us starting in the whole next year, trying to come out of a recession. So while I agree that the schools are extremely important to the county, four thousand, three hundred and something students, we got a population of twenty-seven thousand people. So I'm trying to take a holistic approach and not favor one department over another. I think that we need to ask the schools to do the same thing that we on the county side have done and take frankly, a painful cut. So I, I ask my colleagues to take that under consideration because we, we gotta make up something. I agree, we, we can't raise taxes, so whatever we allocate or whatever we advertise and whatever we ultimately vote to. whatever we ultimately vote to approve, that balance is being made up out of the stabilization fund, putting us in the hole for the following budget year. Just something to consider. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, and Mr. Bush, going off of that, I was on a call earlier this week with Senator Tim Kaine and representatives from the, his, all Virginia, and they mentioned this stimulus, the current stimulus package and the one possible fourth one, and it was going to be really heavy on funding for schools. So I was wondering if any of that had been factored into what the schools are asking, how much, do they even know how much they're going to realize from the stimulus packages? Would it be some less that we have to fund them to help, you know, help that tax, the revenue stabilization fund? Go ahead, Mr. Bush.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm also looking on, on this, the revenue data sheet that Dr. Young provided us this evening on page 11, it looks like the, the revenues from the Commonwealth. So you take what the local contribution is, the revenues from the Commonwealth going to King George County schools, it looks like it's to the tune of 2.265 million dollars. So while we are, we are looking at cutting budgets, the schools would ultimately, regardless of local contribution or not, if it remained intact as a level funding, the schools would still be realizing a 2.265 million dollar increase to their budget in, in a recession. So.
So, but sir, let me do stress that, that's if the budget that's proposed by the governor is approved by the General Assembly, and currently, well, as we stated earlier, we really won't have that fidelity, fidelity until April 22nd.
Ms. Cupca?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of points I'd like to make. So first of all, a line-by-line of the school board budget is available online. Just because they don't hand it to us, and I'm not trying to be insulting when I say this, so please don't take it that way, but just because they don't hand it to us on a silver platter and send it to us in the packet for the meeting we had with Dr. Benson, it is all available online. And I've taken some time in the past couple of months, I looked at, prior to our work session where Dr. Benson presented his budget, what was presented to us that night in the packet was just what they were asking for for the upcoming year. But if you look online at what they were working off of, there is actually a side-by-side comparison of what they were asking for as well as what they did last year. So it's very easy to tell what categories they were asking for increases in. That being said, I certainly agree with you that if we're cutting county staff travel and board supervisor travel, there's probably some school, you know, teacher travel and conferences that need to be cut, plenty of room, plenty of wiggle room, plenty of things to go around. So, Dr. Young, can you tell me, has the school board met since we received their presentation a couple of weeks ago and gave them direction with regard to level funding?
The school board? I don't know, ma'am, I have to ask, but I don't know.
So I, I don't think they have, but I haven't been following their meetings that closely. Do we know when their next meeting is? Is it coming up next week, I believe? Monday. So part of what we said to the school board was they needed, and I believe I was one of the people who said it, is that they needed to dig deep and look for places where they could trim. So I feel like we need to give them the opportunity to do that. We need to let them do that themselves and see what, in fairness, see what they come back to us with. And then I also posed the question about whether they would be able to realize any carryover from the current year, whether that's just in things that, you know, they ended up, expenditures ended up not making due to not operating for the last two months of the year, and I gave Dr. Benson that list. So I'm confident that we'll have a better picture once we give them the opportunity to meet. I just don't want to make a decision for them prematurely when really our job is just to give them a number, and it's their job to figure out how to spend it. So then, that being said, I don't want to just single out the schools. I want to remind everyone that a month ago, we took bold action to support our public safety, and we, we need to hold ourselves accountable for that. So I would like a rundown, and I don't expect it tonight, Dr. Young, but how many cents, what we did last month, how many cents would that equal in, in the form of a tax increase? Because right now, we need to keep our sheriff's deputies, our firefighters, our EMTs, right? That to me, if there is anything that we do, if we did, and I would consider a more gradual phasing in, if we had to do something, it has to be tied to that, because that is a dire, critical need right now. And I'm not sure waiting and kicking the can down the road next year and the year after and doing eight and 10 cents in a year or so is going to be any better than, hey, maybe this year it's just two or three cents. And maybe it's tied to that dire need that we have right now to keep our people here, to keep the people on the front lines, the first responders, able to help us, to keep us healthy, to keep us safe. That's the only, I just would caution, just blanket no tax increase. I don't want one. I'm not saying I want one by any means, but if we look at it long-term, right now, we took some action that we knew at the time we took that action would likely require that kind of response. So let's be mindful of that, and let's not forget that. Thank you.
Madam Chair, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Cupca. To answer your questions, the pay increase that took effect in April equated to a one-cent tax increase. The entire plan equates to a five-cent tax increase. Just to answer your question on that. And then regarding the schools, again, I don't know if they've met to discuss tightening their budget or not. I'm aware that the board had comments during the discussion with Dr. Benson, and if the board would like to ask that the school board consider making some revisions, what I would advise is you all authorize me to write a letter to the board, or a letter to Dr. Benson to share with the board, with the board supervisors stating the actions that we took on the county side of the House for the budget, and ask that the school board take another look at the budget, take, take into consideration the actions that the county has done in light of the upcoming recession, and advise them to please take another look at the budget and see if they can make a, a new version that would be more fitting for the current state of affairs. So with you all's permission, I'd be happy to write that letter, and that basically would be a forcing function to get a formal response from the school board and have a formal communication between the board supervisors and the school board.
Mr. Granger, I saw your hand up, but playing on that, Dr. Young, is I, I would also liken there if, that they have gotten any feedback from the stimulus funds to see, like the focus said, how much they're going to realize that they'll be able to carry over because of an example in their sports, not being, not having to hire buses for transportation, officials, coaching stipends, you know, with that kind of thing, like, where's that shuffle? Maybe they take a look at that to see if they can carry that over. That was one of the things I wanted to say. And then for me and Mr. Granger, Mr. Bush, one thing I wanted to bring up before is we've eliminated our capital projects at the, currently put them on hold, including the courthouse. And one of the thing that really concerns me with now having to stay in that courthouse a little longer is that extra bailiff. And I, I just, you know, want to make sure everybody's safe and secure, not pulling an extra deputy off the road, and now that we're going to have to use that smaller facility for a little while longer, that extra bailiff might be really important, and we keep that in the back of our, our minds also. Mr. Bush, you were first, and then Mr. Granger.
If I may respond, if I may respond?
No.
I'm sorry, because I'm trying to keep up with all the notes. And tracking, ma'am, I can definitely craft a letter to the board, so please, and get you all's approval on that before sending the correspondence to the school board. The only reason why I'm even suggesting that a letter be sent, because this had, this was a conversation we had with Dr. Benson and myself, but you know, conversation with colleagues really isn't a forcing function for a formal conversation, so I was highly advised having a formal memorandum and formal communications established, number one. And I'd be happy if the board so pleases to draft something and get you all's thoughts on that, and forward it. Then number two, ma'am, the courthouse isn't, I don't see the courthouse as a stalled project at the moment, because we weren't looking at actually pursuing a bond or actually even initiating the breaking ground on the courthouse until the following fiscal year. We still have time in this current fiscal year 2021 to see if we want to move forward with the design of the courthouse, and if the design should be paid for with fund balance, or again, as Cal Louts had suggested, maybe a long-term, I'm sorry, short-term financial instrument. So the courthouse isn't absolutely off the table at the moment. We just stalled CIP projects for the current fiscal year, specifically the tennis courts and the middle school. So I definitely don't want, I definitely don't want to think that, that, that's been put out there. The courthouse has not been taken off the table at the moment.
Not been taken off the table, but just the ladies, just, I'm just concerned about safety over there. So, Mr. Bush, you're up next.
Thank you, ma'am. So before I get into my follow-up comments, just to piggyback on what Dr. Young said, so you're looking for a consensus here on correspondence. My, my input would be, just as Ms. Cupca pointed out about the travel, I, I would say if, if the letter's going to contain anything, I would ask to follow the same policy as the county for the schools to suspend raises, capital purchases, and travel, just as the county did. And that's what I would like to see in that correspondence. So I don't, I don't want to keep going back and forth, so were you looking for a consensus from that? Madam Chair, did, did you want to get consensus about that correspondence?
Yeah, I was just waiting to get Ms., if Mr. Granger or Mr. Stonehill had a feedback on that correspondence.
Because my, my comments were general to the budget, or the school's budget, not to the actual correspondence. So I'll yield my comments about, to the budget till after we get the correspondence issued straight. So I'll yield to Mr. Granger.
I, I didn't have a question about the school correspondence. I'm amenable to sending something to him, though. I want to just get a little clarification about the emergency services plan for addressing, I, I know you, you'd come with like a five-point plan on ways to address compensation in order to improve the attractiveness of our county as a place to be employed. And the board had made, I believe, an agreement that we would implement two of them immediately, which was the pay increases, as well as, I think it was the bonuses for certification. Does this budget that you have put together continue to pull, I'm assuming we're not taking raises away. So I'm assuming that's also already been implemented into this budget, but is it also looking to keep that certification pot available as well, the budget that you're presenting to us now?
That's a good point. Yes, sir. The budget does account for the pay increase and the certification pay, and I'm glad you brought that up, sir, I forgot about that piece. Give me one second.
Sure. And so while, while you're looking, of this, you'd mentioned that the full cost was a five-cent tax increase for all of those pieces, all five, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Five cents for all five pieces.
Okay.
And just for certification pay and pay increases, it's approximately two cents.
Two cents. So we'd be looking at a further three cents on top of what we're looking at now if we were to choose to move forward with all of those options. Is that correct, sir? Thank you.
Right. Mr. Stonehill, do you have a question on the, the letter to the school board or a comment?
I have more on the general budget, but for the school, yes, I think we need to send them a letter, and they certainly need to tighten up on that a little bit. You know, I'm looking at this, that it's, you know, fifty, fifty-seven percent of the budget goes to, goes to the school. I mean, they need to work on that a little bit, so I say yes with a letter, and I'll have more on the budget when it comes up.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Stonehill. So, Mr. Bush, I'm going to, do you want to comment on the letter yet? Because I was going to take a consensus on it.
Not on the letter, Madam Chair, let's follow up on the budget, so go ahead.
Dr. Young, did craft that letter?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Stonehill, yes?
Yes.
I say yes. So, Dr. Young, dropping your.
Dr. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So ju- just as a follow-up, I don't want it to seem that I'm unappreciative of the schools. I mean, my wife works for the schools. I'm very appreciative of the schools. They, they give us a wonderful project. This year presents different circumstances, and looking at this holistically, that's why, why I'm focusing on this at this moment. It was brought up about public safety. Now, last year, we gave a significant budget increase to address raises for our teachers to make us more competitive in the region, because other districts had done so. And we did that last year. In previous years, significant tax increases were made in order to bring what was a horrible pay scale in comparison regionally for our teachers, to bring us back up to where we could be competitive. We had a revolving door every summer the schools were busting tail, trying to bring in new teachers, because people were leaving for higher pay. The schools addressed that. This year, we're, we're competitive regionally, and I'm not aware of any other school districts that are, that are giving compensation increases. So I, I believe that is somewhere where, where we're actually good at this year. One thing that I did look at, though, was the ADM, based on, on comments made last meeting, and I'm getting two different numbers. In, in Dr. Benson's report at our last work session that Dr. Benson presented, he said the ADM currently is 4,370 students, and that projections for the following academic year are 4,380 students, which is an increase of ten. But then I've also did follow-up, and I heard, well, the numbers weren't right, it's actually going to be an increase of 30. But when I look at the, the slides that we were given when, when we got that presentation, if you break down the positions they're asking for, the schools are actually looking at an increase of 16 positions. That's 16 new personnel to King George County schools for an ADM increase of 10 to 30 students. High would be 30, and what Dr. Benson actually presented was 10. So either or, 16 new personnel for King George County schools, I, I think is a little bit far-reaching.
This, Mr. Bush, I'm
Yes, sir.
Being to cut in and interrupt your chain of thought, I just wanted to bring a little food for thought to that, that idea, because there was an increase in two, by two guidance counselors, which had to do with reducing the number of guidance counselors to students at the state level, kind of a mandate thing, and so there was, there was a need to do that in order to comply, as well as, I don't know the number of positions, but I think there were a number that were, they were anticipating tying to IEPs, which was a five?
There were five, there were five positions that were tied to special education, which, which linked to the IEPs.
Okay. So I was just trying to bring that up. I think there's, then there would be seven of the 16, which is, you know, certainly there's, there's nine others, but just for people to think about, you know, there, sometimes, you know, we're increasing staff, and, and it's not necessarily because they're just adding new teachers to staff, new teachers, there's federal mandates at it
Right.
As well as that are pushing those.
The mandated positions that I looked at, there were seven.
Okay.
And the teacher-to-student ratio, even if we hired zero, we'd still be well within the state standards for student-teacher ratio. That's something that was touted in the presentation last year, that, you know, we had a very good teacher-to-student ratio. I only bring that up because, not that I'm picking going to schools, but we're not hiring staff either. We're, we're operating at staffing levels from when our population was 17,000. thousand still. So we're, we're making those, those hard calls. I know it's not popular because people will, the perception is, well, you're going against the children or you're going against students. Well, no, i- it's holistic. We're, we're going what's in the best interest of the county as a whole. And, and, and that's where I'm coming from. So I don't want it to seem as though, though I'm picking on the schools, but if anybody's in, in a position to absorb more, it is them because basically the county has been cut and cut deep. And kudos to your staff. Um, we're, we're asking the county to do more with less. And the reason I, I initiated my comments with what we did for the teachers last year and, and, and years prior to bring us up to where we were competitive, that's why it's imperative what we had to do for public safety this year because we, the raises in surrounding areas, a ten-minute drive down the road for somebody to go work somewhere else, it's very real. And that translates into a reality when somebody calls nine-one-one and we don't have the personnel to staff an ambulance, just like the fire I had on Easter Sunday in Fairview Beach. You know, there was some things that attributed there. I- it's staffing. So that, that I believe, I, I believe we made the right call on that and I'll still stand by that decision. Um, I think Ms. Cupka made some excellent points. It's something that we really need to balance. Do we wanna do a, a tapered tax increase, which it's very hard to do during a recession? But reality is, if we don't do it this year, we know next year we're starting two-point-one million dollars in the hole. Do we wanna taper it? Or do we want a punch in the gut the following year? But something's gonna happen. That's just reality. Something to think about.
I, I'd have, I, I'd advise a punch in the gut versus a tapered uh, response. And I say that because I am in close conversations with our neighboring localities and the reality is, all the advertised pay increases and compensation plans that um, they had advertised, they admitted, um, they're having a very hard time figuring out how they're gonna pay for it, number one. And number two, they just, all but one lookout and say, hey, we're not gonna pay for it. We're actually going to put a freeze. So they're basically all at phase one of their uh, pay plans as well. So the market is basically frozen at the moment in light of the um, recession. And I think that we're basically in a good place uh, competitively in the region. And when we can start seeing indicators that we're out of the recession, definitely we could take a look at um, revisiting the discussion again. But I'm, I'm confident that we're in um, a good place competitively with the region at the moment.
So one, one thing I'd like to just, in my comments on, on, on the whole thing with schools is, when the school, before COVID nineteen hit and it became the thing, I even mentioned to some of my colleagues, I was following the school board meeting and when I saw the presentation that the school board had on this budget, I actually shared with some of them, I think this is an awesome budget. I was, I actually called my colleague on the school board and said, thank you guys for, for keeping it re- realistic, okay? I- if you think about it, before COVID hit, before we realized we were going into a recession, our budget for next year, our, our revenues seemed very, very promising. That's something that, that could have been achieved. Everything changed wh- when COVID hit. Everything changed when we realized what's really going on with our revenues coming in, how businesses are being impacted, how families are realizing a loss of income. That's what changed. So I would like to, I'm not throwing the school board under the bus. Like it was mentioned, we don't know when, when they've met. We don't know if they've had the chance to be able to go back and do a line-by-line hard cut. We don't know that. So I'm, I'm definitely not throwing them under the bus. I'm just giving what, what my opinion is and hopefully they can take that for food for thought. I mean, who knows? Some of them may actually agree with me and this, this won't be an issue at all. But prior, prior to this, th- this whole event is what is leading us to all this. So, thank you.
Did you have anything more? No? Uh, Mr. Stonehill?
Um, I hate to even say this, but I don't really like the punch in the gut. Um, you know, the cost of doing business here in the world is, is going up every day, you know, and taxes are one of those things that you just can't, I mean, it, it's, it's money. I mean, it's more, it's more services that, you know, that we have to pay for and, you know, and it, it just scares me to death that our, you know, uh, revenue stabilization fund, you know, if we do this is gonna drop down to, you know, two-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand dollars. And that's just, you know, as kind of a nest egg thing, that just scares me. Um, you know, we did go ahead and um, approve the, the fire rescue stuff and we knew that, you know, that was probably gonna be a, you know, a couple of cent um, um, increase. You know, I, I've talked to a number of people who, you know, are just, they're okay with a, a tax rate, you know, increase because it's services that, you know, that the county has to pay for. And um, you know, if we did a couple of cents this year, a couple of cents next year, you know, as opposed to doing, you know, eight to ten the following year, um, I mean, I hate to even talk about that, but I mean, I think that's a little easier to stomach than, you know, eight or ten cents down the road, um, you know, to make up this deficit that we have. So, you know, that's all I have on that. You know, I, I would prefer, you know, a little bit now, a little bit later, cup for what we've lost. And if we find out that, you know, next year, you know, we get some new businesses or we get something in to help offset that, those costs, well, then we don't have to do it. But I mean, that would be my two cents. And the other thing is, is that we certainly need to get some business here in the county and uh, to help pay for everything.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Stonehill. Ms. Cupka, do you have anything else?
Yes, ma'am. I do. Um, um, actually, Mr. Stonehill, thank you for bringing up the attracting new businesses to the county point. So it had been reported to us that Birchwood would be undergoing some type of transformation at the end of twenty twenty, correct? Is that reflected in here? Any loss of revenue? I, I don't wanna speculate as to what they may or may not do if they have a replacement plan or whatever. I don't wanna speculate, but is that the, is the loss of that revenue captured here too?
Uh, Roger, Madam Chair. And um, I did do a thorough review of the revenues that generated from Birchwood. Um, and the reality is, uh, beyond real estate tax, um, that pay a personal property tax is quite minimal. Um, and I don't know if that's due to uh, depreciation or what. It's like literally three to five thousand dollars. Um, regarding, the most impact that Birchwood has on the county is, is payment of real estate tax. Um, and we're uh, very concerned about that originally, but then we came to realize that regardless of who owns the property, if the project was gonna turn heads, there's, there's still gonna be a real estate tax paid on that property, so.
Okay. Thanks very much.
Ask about that because when I remember I was looking through the audit, they, they do pay a big real estate tax. So that was a concern of mine.
Roger, Madam Chair.
Uh, do any of our citizen advisors have any questions or any comments?
Madam Chairman, one thing from my current point of view is, it, and it's not me personally that I'm speaking for, but I just think people in general, with the crisis that we're having now, to have an increase this year is gonna hurt people. That's all.
Right. Thank you. Um, I had a, a question. Uh, Mark had to leave the meeting and so he, he chatted with me. He wanted to point out and, and confirm that, uh, Dr. Young, this is the second year that we planned on utilizing the revenue stabilization fund. Is that correct?
Dr. Young had to step out for just a moment. He'll be back in just a moment. Um, and then we're gonna ask him that question.
Yes, I do have a, a comment. Um, as far as real estate tax, I tend to agree with Mr. Um, Bush that, I mean, okay, I don't have a mortgage, so my, you know, my real estate tax does not go into a fund. I pay it every six months when it comes due. And um, it, it seems to me that a small portion each year, if need be, would be preferable to, you know, a punch in the gut, as they were saying, uh, a year down the road. Um, you can adjust and, you know, hopefully then readjust. Um, that's just my two cents worth. I mean, I, I'm just thinking at, at a, it, it's easier to make a small adjustment in your budget over time than it is to make a large adjustment all at one time.
Thank you, Mr. Gabriel. Carrie, did you have any comment or question?
Um, I was just going to add in reference to the school board um, budget or just ask, um, the positions that they asked for, is there any way that we can get clarity on those that are absolutely needed and those that they are just wanting? Um, cause I know that there are positions that they, they have to have, um, you know, for the um, different, I guess, requirements of the, of the county or the state.
Thank you, Carrie. Um, yeah, cause I wanted, I want to uh, jump onto that too because um, I remember, remember reading that the governor had relaxed some of his mandates. And so I, I didn't know if any of them were tied to the mandated positions from the uh, in the school side. And then one other question was, I had pointed this out at the last meeting uh, to Dr. Benson, the principal, assistant principal for the middle school, could they delay that a year because they, it is being brought there for the new sixth grade students and it's a year before they come? So, you know, that was just an example. But I, I know, uh, Mark had to leave the meeting and he sent me a message asking you, Dr. Young, uh, is it correct that this would be the second year in a row that we planned on utilizing the revenue stabilization fund?
Actually, last year, Madam Chair, and thank goodness, uh, Wilma Ward, our finance director, accounting director Barbara and myself had a discussion and we raised the red flag and said, hey, um, will you utilize the revenue stabilization fund, I believe, in eighteen, uh, I'm sorry, seventeen, eighteen? And uh, we actually spent eighteen, nineteen replen- replenishing that fund. And that's how that balance got up to the two-point-four million dollars. Um, cause we made sure that um, the budget that we proposed last year brought the uh, rate stabilization fund back into uh, financial compliance. So um, it's, it's been tapped before and it's, it's actually, it's commonplace for it to be tapped to close uh, budget gaps. Um, but we spent um, the la- the last fiscal year replenishing it and it looks like that was a, um, a good thought. Cause here we are in twenty twenty-one, really looking at to go deep into the uh, fund.
Putting on that, usually the stabilization fund, how much is usually in that fund as a, can you just keep putting money in it to, you know, rainy day fund? Is there like a cap on?
It's, it's based off a t- uh, a percentage. The financial policy has it based off a percentage of our operating budget. And I can go and um, pull those numbers, like eight percent of our operating budget, something like that is, is supposed to be uh, maintained as, in the rate stabilization uh, fund. So as our, as our uh, budget increases, which it's tended to do year over year, naturally the balance of the rate stabilization fund is supposed to increase as well.
I just wanted clarification on that. And um, a point on the raising their taxes, I mean, it, it does make sense on both sides to do either not this year or a little increase. But I do remember, and we still hear on the service authority side, when we did the ten cent rate increase, that was a big hit on a lot of people's pocketbooks and those few cus- those customers that are also watered sewer customers and pay county taxes, that would be, that, that's a big hit. Cause they're gonna receive a rate increase this year.
Yes, Madam Chair. And I'm hearing a lot of concerns about the public safety and perhaps pursuing a tax increase for the public safety, but I would highly advise against it because of the fact that it's not a good budgetary practice to raise or take on a new initiative in the middle of uh, a, a recession. Um, basically, as you all can see, we're utilizing our rate stabilization fund, which is basically our savings account running in the negative and to put it in an analogy as in my, our personal analogy, our personal finance analogy, you know, taking on this uh, uh, additional increases to public safety or to this compensation plan would be like purchasing a car with a negative savings account. If we were going to pursue a tax increase, then I would advise, well, if, if, if we're gonna pursue the tax increase, then don't utilize the rate stabilization fund and go in a negative. Utilize it, that tax increase as a way to cover that budget gap. But if, if, if we're going to, and that's if we're gonna pursue the uh, pay increase. But if we're not gonna pursue, I'm sorry, pursue the tax increase. But if we're um, utilizing a tax increase to take on a new initiative, then I, 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 I highly recommend that we take a hard look at really utilizing or tapping our rainy day fund to um, cover that ba- budget gap, if that makes sense, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Young. Does anybody else have any other questions? Ms. Cupka?
Yes, Madam Chair. Um, I appreciate your point about the middle school position, the middle school administrator position, as well as Ms. Cleveland's points. Um, but at the end of the day, those are not our decisions to make. Those are the school board's decisions to make. And I seem to recall between what they were asking for, for across-the-board salary increases was a million or so and what they were asking for, for new positions was give or take a million or so. And so how it worked out, the increase that they were asking us for, I think was like nine-hundred-eighty-four thousand dollars, somewhere around that. And, and we told them that wasn't gonna be a possibility. So it's up to them to figure out how to prioritize with what they have. Either they do one or they do the other, they do the new positions, or they do the raises for the people they already have. Or they do the best that they can for everyone and they have a blended proposal and staff who they can, the new positions that they absolutely need to, and whatever they can do. And again, that, I don't know if y'all remember, but I believe that part of that deal was a two-year plan on the part of the state and that this was the second year. It may be that we have a budget that comes back from the governor. I would hate to see it, but it might be that, that that's no longer valid. So I think we need to wait and see what the governor, what the state general assembly comes back with, what they ultimately approve and what the governor approves, signs. And we let the school board do what they need to do. Cause to me, we're, no offense, but we keep talking about the school board budget and they need to cut this and they need to cut that. That's not our business. That's not our bailiwick. That's not our problem. We give them a pot of money, let them do their job. Thank you.
I agree with, with Ms. Cupka's comments. I just would say that then the pot of money that they came justifying us or justifying to us that they were requesting with those positions and those raises, that, that's why I would be taking that into account. Um, if that's what they used for their justification. If we're simply setting a pot of money, I would say we look at them like we do every other department and we look at cuts. Um, aside from that, um, recessions, when are those due? And only bring that up because if we're talking about the rate stabilization balance and we have to pay it back the next year, well, we know that the housing market, okay, home values, e- even though the economy is where it is right now, it's not, it's not because of other circumstances other than what's going on with COVID. After COVID is gone, the economy should rebound fairly quickly. Um, we're, the United States is a consumer-based economy. Um, that should come back up fairly quickly. With that, also, home values are, should go up since our last reassession. So my question is, when would the rev- the additional revenues from a reassession come in and what kind of difference could that make towards paying off this rate stabilization to where we're not starting off so much in the negative?
The reassessments will um, take place um, this, near the, in this fiscal year with anticipation that uh, the board will be coming to a conclusion on equalizing the tax rate or not equalizing the tax rate, January or February um, of the following calendar year. However, um, when we did the last reassessment, we actually realized an additional increase of one million dollars. It's like, it's like one million thirty thousand dollars of revenue. of revenue from the not equalizing the tax rate. So I don't have a lot of confidence that, you know, that the equalization of not equalizing the tax rate, I think that it would go a long way to helping us to rebuild and replenish the rate stabilization balance. That's the direction that the board wanted to take, but I don't have a lot of confidence that it actually lead to or equate to a $2.4 million.
No, I'm not saying that, but what I'm saying is, it would pay half of what we're tapping into.
It would go a long way into paying that money back.
Madam Chair, may I?
Yep, go ahead, Ms. Kupka.
So, we're still on track to do that reassessment?
Yes, ma'am.
Because according, at our last meeting, if you look at line item, Fund 12320 reassessment, we cut that $200,000 to facilitate that reassessment. So do we have funding for that?
Which one, ma'am?
12310, Commissioner of Revenue, right underneath that, 12320 reassessment.
Give me one second, ma'am. The money for the reassessment is in there, and I'll tell you exactly where it's located.
Because I'm not tracking any money allocated in that line item that it is estimated to cost $200,000.
Let me see.
So I guess my question is, can, how, how do we move forward with that? It's on page one of this.
I got it.
This packet here.
Give me one second, ma'am.
Sure.
I'm looking at the reassessment, but I'm actually going into the direct budget.
Because it looks like the last time that occurred was fiscal year 17, actual. The expenditure was $153,248.
Roger. Give me one second. Because I believe we moved it directly into the Commissioner of Revenue's budget.
So then my question there, if that's the case, her budget from '20 was $484 and change, and now we're saying it's $449 and change, so that's not a delta of $200,000. I just, if we're counting on a reassessment to pull us through on the other side of this, I want to make sure we are in fact funding, capable of funding a reassessment that can do just that.
Roger, ma'am.
Because if not, we need to figure out where that money is coming from to fund the reassessment.
Roger, ma'am. We accounted for, yeah, we had that conversation with Ms. Hart, and there was a reason why we, is accounted for in the budget. I'm trying to remember where it's accounted for. I don't know if it's in.
So if you can, I don't want to hold everyone up, but if you can look into that and email the board back later this week with your findings, I'd appreciate it. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions? Go ahead, Brian.
Took me a second to get my mic, sorry. I just wanted to add one thing. In a recession, housing values typically decline. That's been historic. Just add that to the pie. And then the other thing is, as far as coming back quickly from this, I think you're going to see a boom, but you're going to see a slowdown for quite a long time because things are going to be different. So I would just be very cautious on that side.
Yeah, I understand what you said. I have a couple of family members that are in the healthcare industry, and they have mentioned that they've been told by officials and, you know, at the federal level that, you know, life will be totally different, and we just don't know what it is yet, and, you know, because people are going to act and behave differently, spending habits, everything.
As far as that goes, my only, this is my opinion, is I think everybody needs to lower budgets during this time of uncertainty, and whatever we got to do, and like someone said, I forget who it was, schools need to lower theirs also.
Yeah, and off of that, I still would like to see, and maybe we just have to wait a little bit to see what the state comes back in the budget and what the stabilization funds is going to give to our schools and to us. All right, Dr. Young.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next slide. Another issue we have to consider for the following fiscal year is the Personal Property Tax Relief Act, or PPTRA. The Personal Property Tax Relief Act is a program that allows localities to provide owners of registered vehicles an abatement on the first $20,000 of value for qualifying cars. The money used to abate the personal property tax is provided to the county from the Commonwealth. The Commonwealth has provided a historically fixed amount of $2,147,868 to King George County for the PPTR program. The funding allowed for the county's PPTR to be set at 32% for fiscal year 1819 and 30% for fiscal year 1920. However, the county's vehicle population size and value is dynamic. To remain physically in sync with the Commonwealth's static funding, the PPTR rate must remain aligned with the funding provided to us by the Commonwealth. Our mark run thus far predict that if we maintain the PPTRA at 30% in fiscal year 2021, we'll expend $2,136,599 in abatements, or slightly less than $10,000 of the funding that's provided to us by the state. So the decision to maintain our PPTR at 30%, will allow the county to support the PPTRA without subsidizing the program with general fund money. So when it is time to adopt the PPTR rate for fiscal year 2021, I would recommend the board adopt a 30% personal property tax rate for fiscal year 2021.
Any discussion on that? No? Okay, go ahead, Dr. Young.
Next slide, next slide. So again, in light of our discussions regarding the instability in the state budget, our timeline has been adjusted to the right. What we'd recommend is a work session number eight on April 27, 2020. If the board can accommodate that, we'll review the state budget and how it's impacted the county budget. We'll present our final budget proposal, then request the board authorize the staff to advertise a public hearing. That public hearing will take place seven days later on May 4, 2020, with the adoption taking place seven days later on May 11, 2020. So, May 4 is a board meeting, so I need to know if the board, get a consensus from the board to advertise the work session for April 27.
That'll work for me.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yes, please.
Please. That's, works for us. Oh, Mr. Bush?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The only thing, I just have this feeling, if, since we're waiting for a review of the state budget, if the schools do come up again in conversation, which they most likely will, would it be fair to invite Dr. Benson to attend that work session if, if we'd like to, if there's some questions or something that comes up to provide clarity? It's just a suggestion, because speaking for myself, I probably will be bringing up the schools again, and in all fairness, I'd like to give him the opportunity to maybe rebut or provide some clarity.
Yes, sir, if that's the board's desire.
I would always say he's welcome. Certainly, I have no qualms with Mr. or Dr. Benson attending.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Well, I guess that would, that'd be good. We invite Dr. Benson. Well, so we, so we've got the work session down. Everybody's okay with that? And so public hearing, we'll just still slate that for then?
Yes, Madam Chair. Well, definitely, I'll wait, we'll ask permission to advertise the public hearing at the April 27 meeting, just to make sure that we're all free and clear, and there's no misunderstandings from the state budget.
Okay, and then the budget adoption, if this timeline all plays out, would be then the next board meeting after that. Is that correct?
No, I'm sorry. The May 4 meeting is a board meeting, so we'd. And then the budget adoption, at the board meeting, we could ask the board for permission to advertise that May 11 meeting for the adoption.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, we just needed the next day, April 27.
All right, well, I think we got that. What's our next step or our next slide?
That brings us to the conclusion of our presentation regarding the budget, and I'll stand by for any additional questions.
Do we have any other additional questions of fellow members of the board or our citizen advisors?
Okay, Madam Chair, if there's no questions regarding the budget, then I need to talk to the board regarding the declaration of a local emergency. As you all are aware, our current local declaration expires tomorrow, and I wanted to utilize this opportunity to request that the board adopt a new resolution declaring a local emergency and extending that out to the 14th of May, 2020. Here's the resolution. I'll go ahead and read it for the benefit of the general public. Whereas in March of 2020, Virginia Governor Ralph S. Northam issued Executive Orders 51, 53, and 55, declaring a state of emergency for the Commonwealth of Virginia arising from the novel coronavirus or COVID-19 pandemic, clarifying and expanding such orders and ordering a stay-at-home slash shelter-in-place order. And whereas these executive orders acknowledge the existence of a public health emergency that constitute a disaster and/or a major disaster as defined by Virginia Code 44-146.16, arising from the public health threat presented by a communicable disease anticipated to spread. And whereas these executive orders order implementation of the Commonwealth of Virginia Emergency Operation Plan, activation of the Virginia Emergency Operations Center to provide assistance to local governments and authorization for executive branch agencies to waive any state requirement or regulation as appropriate. And whereas on March 13, 2020, the President of the United States, Donald J. Trump, declared a national emergency beginning March 1, 2020, in response to the spread of the COVID-19. And whereas on March 11, 2020, the World Health Organization declared the COVID-19 outbreak a pandemic. And whereas on April 7, 2020, the King George County Board of Supervisors passed an ordinance to provide a method to assure continuity of government in the event of a disaster for a period not to exceed six months pursuant to Virginia Code 15.21413. And whereas the board finds that COVID-19 constitutes an ongoing real and substantial threat to public health and safety and constitutes a disaster and/or a major disaster as defined by Virginia Code 44-146.16, being a communicable disease or public health threat. And whereas on March 16, 2020, the local Director of Emergency Management declared a local emergency on King George County, which is confirmed on March 17, 2020 by the board. And whereas Virginia Code 44-146.21C further provides that a local Director of Emergency Management or any member of a governing body in his absence, in his absence, may be, may upon the declaration of a local emergency, proceed without regard to time-consuming procedures or formalities prescribed by law, set mandatory constitutional requirements pertaining to performance of public work. And whereas the local Director of Emergency Management and the board have determined that the local emergency and disaster is and will continue to pose a threat in actual occurrence of emergency and disaster, which is of sufficient severity and magnitude to warrant coordinated local government action to prevent or alleviate the damage, loss, hardship, or suffering. And therefore, on this 15th day of April 2020, I name and say, Young County Administrator for King George County, acting in my capacity as the local Director of Emergency Management, and with the consent of the King George County Board of Supervisors, hereby declare a continuing local emergency pursuant to the Commonwealth of Virginia's Emergency Services and Disaster Law, Virginia Code 44-146.13. This declaration will expire on the 14th day of May 2020, unless otherwise terminated or extended as may be allowed by law. In light of that declaration, the board would sign a resolution dated for today's date in the boardroom 10459, Court House Drive, on April 15, 2020. The board supervisors of the King George County, Virginia, finds that COVID-19 constitutes a continuing real and substantial threat to public health and safety and constitutes a disaster and/or a major disaster as defined by Virginia Code 44-146.16, being a communicable disease or public health threat, and that on March 16, 2020, the local Director of Emergency Management declared a local emergency on King George County, which is confirmed on March 17, 2020 by the board, and that the local emergency and disaster is and will continue and pose a threat in actual occurrence of an emergency and disaster, which is of sufficient severity and magnitude to warrant coordinated local government action to prevent or alleviate the damage, loss, hardship, or suffering, and that the county administrator of the county of King George, acting in his capacity as the local Director of Emergency Management, recommends that the board consent, confirm, and declare a continuing local emergency pursuant to the Commonwealth of Virginia Emergency Services and Disaster Law, Virginia Code 44-146.13. And now therefore, it is hereby declared by the Board of Supervisors of the County of King George, Virginia, that a local emergency exists and continues to exist throughout the county of King George, and it is further declared and ordered that during the existence of this emergency, the powers, functions, and duties of the Director of Emergency Management and Emergency Management Organization and functions of the county of King George are those prescribed by the laws of the Commonwealth of Virginia and the ordinances, resolutions, and approved plans of the county of King George in order to mitigate the effects of said, mitigate the effects of said emergency. This state of local emergency shall end when this condition of peril has abated or at midnight on May 14, 2020.
Move to adopt as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Bush.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Where did we come up with the 14th day of May?
Thirty days out, sir.
Okay.
In accordance with state code.
So there's no way we could make it for like, May 1st and then reassess? It has to be 30 days, correct?
No, sir. State code states that it can't last longer than 30 days.
But I'm not looking to make it longer. I was thinking maybe reassess at shorter periods instead of going it out.
Gives us the opportunity to rescind it at any time as well.
And it can't be rescinded. It says it could be rescinded if the peril is abated, but I recommend it 30 days because we're trying to catch up with the state.
As long as we can rescind it, if, if it's warranted.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm fine. I'm good.
Okay. Discussion, make a motion properly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any names? No? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you. And thank you, Dr. Young, and our county attorney, Matt Britton, for putting that together.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes my presentation, Madam Chair.
I move to adjourn until Tuesday, April 21 at 6:30 in the boardroom.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for participating in this good meeting once again. Bye-bye.